We're going to have to. Well, let's swing in. Liam, we're gonna spin it up. Give it a shot.
How are you?
Good evening. Yeah.
They're right there. I'm here. Here for you. You're here, I'm here for you.
Yes, yes. Going to be a lot of risk, because there's gonna be a lot of children at home now. Oh. Yeah. There's Angie. Jennifer. All right, we got this. Miss Flint, she's here. Still waiting for Mr. Wiler and Mr. Wheeler, but we'll be there.
Thanks, thanks so much. I really feel the love.
No, not one of your hands. How's it going? Taking about three classes. Not really bad. My first assignment today was to take a picture of your candidate. We had a good discussion over the difference between business learning online. That was good. I can blur that line a little bit.
Yeah, to me it's kind of the same. Yeah, so that would be a good narrative.
Well, especially different. Laurel others, business learning is really some kind of standard. I'm not certain if it's like, secondary for sure, online learning.
Yes, on there's kind of, which is middle of the night. I have, my youngest is seventeen. I have days about six. But I'll stick with that.
And I remember it feels like when you weren't running away from your parents.
I'm gonna call this meeting to order. Ed, roll call please.
Sandersville?
Here.
Wiley?
Here.
Andrew?
Here.
Carl?
Here.
Wood?
Here.
John, are there any additions to the agenda?
Yeah, so, one thing, Tony Swayzer, Tony does our IJ program, so he was able to be here tonight. We've been trying for the last two months, and so he was available tonight, and so, yeah, when we get to the reports, we're gonna start off with Tony, so.
Okay. Is there a motion to approve the agenda as amended? So, second?
Second.
Ed, roll call please.
Sandersville?
Yes.
Wiley?
Yes.
Andrew?
Yes.
Carl?
Yes.
Flint?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
So, we have no more for citizens comments, so that moves us on to the approval of our minutes claims and financial reports. Ed, do you have anything you'd like to point out for us?
Uh, nothing, anything out of the ordinary, just, you know, we have eleven hours, twelve months to the fiscal year, and you can see our revenue server, accounting has expected ninety percent of general fund, what we budgeted, and the expenditure is eighty percent. One thing we will note that last month we did receive a buck, it's not beyond sixty thousand dollars in our special funds bill, so, we can carry those over over the years, and especially years of, you know, use of all budgeted, so.
And then I have a question, you talked earlier about the property tax moratorium, what's going to delay us receiving some funds? Did that happen, or did we?
No, not really, we are pretty much on target with what we budgeted thirty years, so, very little divided in progress.
Didn't know whether we were gonna wind fall soon, I didn't know.
Yeah, definitely, most people still pay for them at times.
John, what do you think?
The only, the only thing that I was gonna point out, if you look through the bills, there were a couple of things that you may have noticed. There was a twenty-one thousand dollar bill there for, from Axiom, that's, that was the CNC machine for the, the Buildings and Trades Program, and that was both, the, can't remember Todd, what was the state funds called? Yeah, Future Ready Island, yep, so, those were partly state funds and Perkins Funds also, and you probably noticed some second semester open enrollment bills in there, typically when you saw payments to other school districts, those were first second semester open enrollment, and then the other big item there was the scrubbers from Home Depot Industrial, the scrubbers for the elementary buildings were in there, so those are just a few things that stuck out to me.
Any other questions? If not, then I would entertain a motion to approve our minutes claims and financial reports. Ed, roll call.
Sandersville?
Yes.
Wiley?
Yes.
Andrew?
Yes.
Amos?
Yes.
Carl?
Yes.
Flint?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Okay, that was approved, so that means that Tony is up now.
All right. I'll give you this, you probably don't wanna stand directly from a speaker, you can give me that, so.
Hello, good evening, how are you guys? My name's Antonio Swayzer, and I'm with IJ at Mount Pleasant High School, eleven twelve special needs. I'm gonna keep this short, brief, and give you guys an opportunity for a Q and A. Our program for IJ, it stands for Iowa Jobs for America's Rapids. Anyone familiar with that? Yes, one here. So, our goal is for kids in a position to be successful. Not everyone wants to go to college, and if they do, my job is to make sure I help facilitate that. Also, to help them find a way after school, after high school, they wanna go right into the workforce. And I wanna make sure that everyone knows that we're gonna sit here and put our kids in the best position to understand every opportunity they have. This is a great school district, and there's a lot of opportunities for kids who do not realize. My kids are not all multifunctional, and they're not all high functional, they're, excuse me, they're about fifty-fifty, and there's something in between. So, any other questions? No questions? So, how IJ works is, we start with a career association, and we wanna make sure we get employer engagement. And with the employer engagement, that means we wanna facilitate a relationship between the school district, our program, and employers in town. And we've, we've done that with CompTech, they've helped join our, our school district here, our program, and we have a few others we were working with, but COVID nineteen changed that. We have about forty-seven students that went through the program this year, and yes, they all graduated. Hundred percent. And going forward, post-COVID nineteen, I have some more data points I would like to come back and talk to you about in the future. We do not have those right now. But we do have a summer program called Learning Art, that gives kids an opportunity to make four hundred, maybe four twelve, four hundred and twelve dollars this summer for two, three weeks, if they get graduated, if they all graduate. So, what we can do is, we can go to our juniors, and we'll be seniors, if I can keep them in the loop, I can teach them. The best thing about this program is, when you graduate, I track you for a year. So, if you go off into the real world, I have all your information. If you have an interview, I probably have all your information, your resume, your GPA, or anything you need, I have it. For my juniors, the best thing about them, they're gonna take this whole class next year. And I already was told today that I already have twenty-nine kids signed up, and I didn't interview any of them. But you have to interview to go through this process, and we wanna make sure we get the kids that wanna be in this program, and we wanna make sure that we can help the kids that are not in the program see someone that looks like me in a positive light. Any questions?
So, you will interview the twenty-nine juniors that have signed up for it?
The twenty-nine juniors, well, some of our sophomores, I believe, the kids who were in my program last year, they're already active, most of them are already totally there, signing up. But I'm still gonna sit there and try to sit down and pull in a few more kids, so we can get to forty-five, fifty kids in the program. But it's upcoming, twenty, twenty-one here.
So, you just check with local businesses in Henry County, Mount Pleasant, South East Iowa, or?
We're working with Southeast Iowa, Community College, Indian Hills, Kirkwood, and we're also working with any, any business in the state. What's, what's good about Mount Pleasant is, we have, you guys own your own life municipal, and so that guy is the president of that board for the state of Iowa. And so it also allows us to bring in, if you were from Mount Pleasant, and you wanna go to school on the other side of the state, we will help you with that, and we also can help you get a job anywhere in the state of Iowa. Our state IJ actually runs Illinois, Nebraska, and so we're still growing. Any other questions?
Tony, talk a little bit about the training that you received as, as a leader of the program here. The IJ program is, it's a partnership between the, the state of Iowa at the, at the, at the state level, the legislative level, businesses of Iowa, and then local school districts, because it costs about sixty thousand dollars a year to run. Twenty thousand dollars for that is local, twenty thousand dollars comes from the state, and then about twenty thousand dollars from the, the business partnerships. So, just talk a little bit about the training that you received, and, and, you know, maybe the training going forward.
Well, of course, I'm from Southeast Iowa, from Relenting, you know, I'm a Tiger, Iowa Wesleyan, thank you. So, I have a vested interest in this everything, and the training I received when I went through our IJ program, it was very intensive all last summer, and I was already coming back, coming from Young House background, where I dealt with kids with that risk. So, the training we went through was teach me how to do a PBL, you guys wanna know what a PBL is? We do that in class, it's project-based learning. We do that three days a week, and the project-based learning is for weeks, is for us, and to take the program and put the kids in a position to understand how to get a job, how to work a job, how to continue a job, and any other thing they need. Any other questions?
So, you guys say that you helped us get a job, is it because of your connection with those businesses, or is it just, here's, here's like interview tips, or?
We do, we do interview tips. Some of it is with my connection, but really it's not. Usually, most of the kids had a job, but we wanna take that job that they have, and let that work and grow and experience, so if they wanna go, go on to be a doctor. If they don't wanna go on to college, then we wanna make sure we put them in a position to get a job here locally, or if they wanna go to either city, they wanna get those tools, so we have partnerships where the training is also. Any questions?
Todd, what's your, you know, you talked to the, to the Policy Committee last Friday about IJ, just in your leadership role, can you speak to it a little bit?
I think the, the IJ program fits another niche of kids, you know, we have kids who are into electronics, kids who are into academics, kids who are into music, kids who are into art, kids who are into welding, and now we have an add program. We have kids who are into computer design, we have kids who are in the video team, and those are all niches that different kids fit, and this is another place that we have more kids, more unique kids that aren't involved in anything else, they become involved in this. So, it's a, it's another niche of kids that we're thinking the national level.
And we do have an extra program within our program, uh, through athletes and sophomores, feed them into our program. That's not part of our program initially, but it's something I was willing to take on, willing to help anywhere in the high school or the school district, I'm needed.
Todd, can I ask, I'm gonna put you on the spot just a little bit, Tony's seniors, they were hundred percent grad, graduation. I mean, you know who some of those kids are, were they a hundred percent?
He was on his way to that, there were a couple of kids that he would've been spending nights with here, but I think they would've made it. My bet would've been that they would've made it with his help.
So, if anybody here wants to do Alvin two, I'm an expert in Alvin two, so, just let me know, maybe like I was, but this year I found out I was. Well, thank you for your time, if there's no other questions, hopefully next time I come back, I'm a little scared of them.
We'll have you back in the, in the fall, you know, when you get back in, nice one.
Thank you. It'd be nice to hear from so many kids that are in this program.
Yeah, it's good.
Have some stuff to tell them. Katie's up next.
All right, inspectional services.
That's all, there we go. All right, so, what Mr. Kinecton has been speaking on tonight is our literacy adoption. Last year, we were at this point looking at math for elementary, we adopted the ready curriculum from Curriculum Associates for K through five, and so this year we are looking at literacy. So, I do have a sheet that looks like this in front of you, and I wanted to really start out with a huge amount of gratitude towards the diverse community that we put into place, they really went so far above and beyond in their critique and their knowledge and supported this process, because we wanted to make sure that we had the best fit in front of kids moving forward. So, we started this, actually, I started over a year ago, looking at different programs, we convened this committee starting with end of January, and then, of course, we know, as history tells us, what happened to March, but we made, we made a lot of different combinations to make that move forward. We started out with a couple of meetings, face-to-face, where this whole team, and you can see it's a very large team, we have everything from special education talent to gifted classroom teachers, instructional coaches, administration, missile friends, and the administration team worked really hard to make sure that communication was out. We really tried to build the team that had a passion and expertise in this area, so that we could make good, good decisions for all. Oh, I forgot, Hill L was on there as well, so, it's a very large committee, but they worked so well together, and after we had the COVID nineteen shutdown, they did miraculous things via Zoom, so, kudos to them. The team there, again, huge thanks, goes up to them. The first part that we started out with was, there's a lot of programs out there, there's a lot of publishers of programs, and it's really hard to know where to start. There's a program called Ed Reports, and I do have the link there, I can send it to you if you'd ever like to look at it. Ed Reports is a, is a third-party nonprofit organization that has created intensive rubrics to look at specific programs in any content area. We literacy math, some science, and they are, they continue to move forward and grow, they're about five years old, but they have three gateways that, with over six hundred reviewers, that put the curriculum, the programs in place to meet the specific things. And so those, those, those were our, that was our screening, that's what we said, they have the capacity to look at these with a fine tooth detail. If, if they rank highly for Ed Reports, and we did the same thing with math, if they rank highly, for example, all injury is one of the terms we would use, then we would consider it. So, they have looked, and publishing companies are actively seek out the highest ratings possible, because they know that that's what school districts have been too, so, we felt comfortable with using that as our screening process. The, the gateways that you have to pass if you're a publisher are text quality for literacy, so we know that it has to have the quality of text for students to be engaged with, it needs to be aligned to the content standards, and then the last third gateway is usability, and that's usability as a teacher and a student, but mostly from the teacher perspective, if you can teach from this, because you can pick up a program, just like you pick up an understanding, or you pick up anything, and you look at that and you go, I have no idea what they're talking about, or how to put this piece of equipment together, or whatever, using that manual, or the same thing for a teacher's manual. If it's not usable, if I can't get into that program electronically, there are clicks, and it's easy to sign into, that just makes something, that harder, so, that's the third gateway. One nice thing is that if the program doesn't have the first two gateways, such as text quality and alignment to standards, at a high-end level, they don't really look at usability, so, knowing that things might only have two ratings, we threw those out immediately, because we knew that they weren't high enough to meet our standards. The programs that we looked at that met that initial process for elementary were art, with Wisdom, EL, and CKLA by Amplify. As we moved through the process, we found out, because as the publisher retail programs go, they don't tell you how much they're gonna suck on, you have to actually meet with them and get some pieces in place, it's, it's a nice little sales pitch, and we found out that art was way beyond the budget that we would be able to put forward to, so we had to take that, that one out of the running, we were left with three, which ended up being okay. We were left with three, which ended up being okay. Art was impressive in many, many, many pieces, but the sticker shop was something that we knew wasn't something that was sustainable. So the advisory then continued on with what they thought was priority. And you're going to see the grades K two, grades three, five came up with some priority lists that weren't important for them. They came with consensus on this. So you take this diverse team of educators and have them come up with these bulletproof lists. You know that they've been well thought out and well. There are some things that were lacking in our programs that they really thought were detrimental to students. So if you look at K two, reading, writing, listening, speaking, foundational skills, phonics, communicative awareness, vocabulary, diverse texts, we wanted to make sure that it supported our programs and gradually was responsibility, social, emotional learning, had to be something that was engaging. And we wanted to make sure that families were involved with this. And little did we know that in January, when we put these lists together, that they became even more important as we had students being educated in their homes. Grades three through five, again, some very strong things in there. Reading, writing, listening, speaking, writing, you just can't get pissed at writing enough. And so that was a huge piece we really critiqued and looked at the elements of writing. So you can see that those things are really strong. And so after each time that we met, they went back to their teams of teachers, their great volunteers, and talked to them and shared with them. They did a lot of research. I think Lori became the queen of sending out research-based articles. So it could have been a college course in itself, but by the time we got through the vocabulary of some, but it was a great learning experience for all. After we had our consensus of what we did, we applied that then several iterations to what the programs looked like. So between meeting with the vendors and the publishers, to researching with other school districts and what they had implemented, what were the strengths, what were the weaknesses, to taking it back to the teams and saying, can we find this? What does this look like? Try this lesson. We had samples brought in that the teachers were using and practicing with and reviewing and sharing with their colleagues. So after about six months of taking things back and forth, they came with consensus and chose CKLA, which stands for Core Knowledge Language Arts, as the program that we will be implementing next year. And luckily for us, they also have a pre-K program. We weren't specifically looking at that, but that was a nice piece to have that beginning early literacy, emergent reader, well-aligned with everything else in the district. So we know our four-year-olds going into kindergarten have that preset skills to help them be successful in kindergarten as pre-readers. So that's a little bit of our process. Do you have any questions about how they can work with that or what it looks like?
Were you able to take anything that you learned selecting math curriculum and lessons where it applied in a year that maybe might go further? Or you'll at least address those thoughts before you get to that?
Absolutely. I, you know, we're building out a return to learn plan. So one of those pieces is how usable and how much online support we can get to that virtual learning going into next year. So those were some of those big questions of, okay, we have to think about a different model. Those online pieces become even more important to engage students in the distance learning. So we've taken some of what we learned with Ready Math and the online components and the great reports that we had with students using that and the data that we got from that, and wanted to make sure that literacy was in there. That was just one thing. Were there other things that they were taking in some of those meetings?
I think we had, and this is really a credit to, I mean, there haven't been a lot of great things come out of the shutdown, but there have been some good things. We had a lot more time to really delve into these curriculums and, you know, make sure that we were really comfortable with what we were getting and what they offered and, you know, what their strengths and weaknesses were. So, I mean, I feel like we had a much better opportunity maybe to do that than we would have had it not been for the shutdown. I felt like I had a lot more time to really go through those things. And, you know, we just really relied on the science and of the programs. CKLA, strong in the science, strong in usability, strong in that text complexity component. I mean, I feel like the team really, you know, was comfortable with the decision that was made.
Katie, I was happy to see the MTSS as one of the bullet points. And you were pretty happy with the help that was given to the teachers to provide that tiered support?
Yes. Yes. Programs are getting so much better at identifying what that core essential is, but then what is the, what is the next level of support if students aren't successful? What's the next level? And building that into the program so that it's not an automatic, come out of the room and have some, an outside teacher teach something immediately to them. It's definitely built into this program.
Yeah, but MTSS sounds great, but then how do we do it?
And I think Tony, you were happy with that.
Yes. Again, I can just briefly do it. One of the components of CKLA is it's very important. K two is very important in that you get foundational skills in there, communicative awareness for phonics, fluency. That is the most important thing to get solid, K two, that has to happen. And CKLA dedicates 60 minutes a day in K two to that component. There's another 60 minutes a day devoted to building knowledge. So they're also working on that language comprehension component. But within 60 minutes a day of foundational skills is targeted time to work with small groups and individual students so that we can keep their friend-keeping along.
And they all write. They have to write.
They all write.
They have to write. Preschoolers will be writing. It's just a necessary higher order thing to develop their brains. We have to do it. And not only just the writing part of it, but the handwriting part of it is built into the program. So it's a cohesive piece. The nice part about it that I heard over and over again, where the unit topics, very science and social studies-driven, so we're building background knowledge. And so you're getting a double whammy. The kids are reading about historical perspectives or trying to think of some of those fun topics. But it's either science or social study really heavily built into it. Right, right, I saw a couple of them had amazing pieces in poetry in it. So just a nice, diverse, rich background that we're getting students into.
Well, we'll be starting over with the assessments then, like it will be like apples to oranges or it'll be some of the take-ins?
Our primary assessment is actually a state assessment. It's called Fast Bridge. And so we're not, we're not changing that. We legally have to give that to students in K three, so we will continue that. The assessments overall from CKLA will be different, but we do have that core basic piece from Fast Bridge that won't change. So we'll be able to prepare for it over time.
So it's like, David, does that include the way to get a little more of a program for people and our power, learning everything from, from at home, online?
They have family supports, they have teacher supports to be in a virtual world, yes. All of the programs that we were looking at are aimed at having those pieces in it. So something that we definitely have in this.
So I totally agree with you. We've identified that math and reading were two of our big holes in our curriculum. What's next then as we think about our curriculum to strengthen things?
Sorry. I said, I said, it only took us five years to get these. We took it five years, Mark. Yes.
No. It's huge. And I will, I will not take away from that.
You know, we need to continue to look at where we're successful, what's working with kids. I know rather than implementing something new at the elementary, really looking at social studies and science and making sure that we're spending the right amount of time and that quality programs are in place. Because we handed a social studies program and didn't have a lot of time because of math to do that. So I think at the elementary level, and I know that there's some who are asking me about science, that we need to beef that up a little bit. But I think doing these two programs well and taking some time to be heavily invested in is important as we add in some of those other pieces. I know that I've had some secondary teachers talk to me about some math and some science things. So I definitely want to pick up the ball and continue innovating and doing our best work that we can.
Yeah, it was really nice to hear that some of the science and social studies will be built into the reading and math. I am kind of hopeful that when they do science, they can do a little hands-on along with the reader. But I don't know if that's going to be lasting too long.
The pro, the hard part with that is that the standards that we would be teaching aren't perfectly aligned with the standards that we might be teaching in that grade level. However, as everyone pointed out to me, I was going, oh, great, how are we going, and this floss kid's coming in and they're talking about plants here, but we don't talk about plants until this grade. I just started thinking this, and really it's actually good because you're talking about it in this grade, and then they get it in this grade in another content. And so that background knowledge of what they're learning carries forward with them. And so once I, once I bought into that after they showed me those pieces and they talked to some districts who are implementing them, that was a helpful perspective because I was immediately stuck on, okay, you're talking about plants in first grade here, but we're not teaching it until this grade in this core. And I was just, what do we do? Our science doesn't match up with our reading, our social studies doesn't match up with it. But then it's more about the background knowledge and engaging rich guys. So.
And first, you wouldn't have to duplicate a floss kid. I just, you know, if they're talking about flowers, you wouldn't hurt to bring in a sock, you know?
Right. Well, I know that some of the supports that we've had with, with Carrie through the extension is what are we learning and how can we match those up and getting them to be engaging? So all along, we are continually trying to get our hands on because.
He is a math science teacher, right?
It's a good thing. It's a good thing. Other thoughts or questions? Thank you, Katie. I'm sure you have more for me on this program as the other story.
All right. Thank you, Katie and Lori. Thank you for all your work on that committee. Excited about a consistent curriculum in math and reading, grades K five.
Sure, I can stand down.
All right. A few things from the superintendent's report. Number one there, just a school closure-related items. I guess the school closure is over now, but if you want to put on your calendars, the class of 2020 graduation, it's going to happen on Saturday, June 27th at seven o'clock. We will be outside. We're going to be at our Maple Leaf facility. We think we're going to be on the football field is what we're going to do and use the bleachers for the football field. So, yeah, so I, more details coming, but that is the, that is the plan. So, let's see. As you know, every month, the School Board Association sends out some data maps, and I always try and share that with you because I think it's interesting information, a lot of times about, you know, what's the data say, you know, for Mount Pleasant? So this one, this past month, they put out minority enrollments as a percentage of total pre-kindergarten to pre-12th grade enrollments. That's for this, you know, this past school year that we are in. So if you go down here to the legend, and you've got that in front of you, in your pocket, you can see the grades from light gray to darker gray are the lower percentages. And then you go blue and gold and then darker gold for the higher percentages. So you get a look there at the state as a whole on the minority percentages. And then we can zoom in on Southeast Iowa. And you can see Mount Pleasant for our, for our school district this past year, 21.4% of our students are minority students. And it just kind of gives you a sense for the region, what those, what those percentages are. That, that 21.4, the graph that they, that they put along with this map was, okay, what has it been over time since, since the 14, 15 school year all the way until now? And our percentage has stayed right about the same, that lower from, from 20 to 24% on any given year between those, between that 14, 15 and this last school year. So. And you can see statewide there, the total pre-K through 12 enrollment and then the minority enrollment, and then the, the average percentage, 25.5. Just, just some interesting information. We're a very diverse, we're a very diverse school district. Okay. And then a couple other things here. Department of Education Return to Learn update. I have, I've, you know, talked to you at least via email a lot about Return to Learn. And let me go through just quickly, I'll go through some of the guidance, excuse me, from Return to Learn from the state. You can see this, this came out a month ago, and, but the guidance has really not changed. And so I want to try and give you a little bit of a sense of what we're trying to do with Return to Learn. And I think Katie would, would, would agree with me. Sometimes we wonder, what are we trying to do with Return to Learn? And I guarantee you, the superintendent's in the Great Prairie region would echo that same thing. This has been a daunting process. But so we're creating the Return to Learn Plan. So Iowa schools will potentially, I'm just going to go over the highlighted parts. Those are my highlights. Iowa schools will potentially reopen in stages rather than all at once in the fall as they have in previous years. Well, you know, maybe, that, that's a month ago that this was written. So that may, that may happen. But we have to prepare for that, whether we're going to be all in attendance or in order. Are we going to be some kind of hybrid model, some in attendance and some not in attendance and, and, you know, something that looks like that? Or are we going to be all in remote learning? So the one thing I would mention with that is it is, it's becoming clearer and clearer. And it was very clear today in our conversation, the Great Prairie Superintendent's, and our Zoom session is led by Cindy Yelich. Cindy is the Great Prairie Chief Administrator. And she is on the Department of Education's Return to Learn Task Force. It's very clear that local school districts are going to make local decisions about what the Return to Learning looks like in August. You're going to do that in conjunction with the local boards of public health. So unless, what I'm, what I'm saying is, is that unless there was a huge outbreak statewide, there is not going, and this, the, Amy Williamson from the Department of Education said this the other day also, unless there was a huge outbreak statewide, you are not going to see the governor step in and say, okay, all schools are shut down. You're going to have to work with your local board of public health and that leadership and make a decision with the board, what is right for our school district. They've been very hesitant to give any, any metrics of what that might look like, you know, cases, numbers of cases or numbers of hospitalizations. It's just not there. They're just, they're just not giving you that or giving us that. And so we're going to have to be very involved with Shelley Van Dorn and the, and the board of public health, fortunately Sue Weiss, one of our school nurses, she sits on that board, so that's very good. But I guess what I'm, what I'm sharing with you is that's going to be a local decision as we get closer to that, to that date. And so, you know, I can't give you anything definitive right now. I have some thoughts as we're going through this Return to Learn process. So let's, let's go through this just a little bit more here. The school calendar, a school district or a credit non-public may begin its school calendar before August 23rd. As you know, the August 23rd date is the date in code where you can't start school before that date. Well, that has been waived, the governor waived that, but only if the school adopts a calendar as part of its Return to Learn Plan submitted to the department. Right now, we don't have any plans to start, to start school earlier than Monday, August 24th. That's what our calendar, that's the calendar that you approved back in February, I think, to start on the 21st, excuse me, the 24th. That's the first date that's available, it's a Monday. And we don't have any plans to start any earlier than that or make wholesale changes to the calendar. Most districts are taking the same approach. And I think it also, it has somewhat to do with, let's get as much of the virus in rear view mirror as possible rather than, you know, starting up any earlier. So that, that has been our plan when, when I have been asked, that's what I have shared. Someone, unless you as a board said, no, we want to, we really want to start earlier, our plan. unless you as a board said, no, we want to, we really want to start earlier. Our plan is to start on August 24th. Let's see. Steps, the steps, plan for required continuous learning. So the, this continuous learning, I've said in every meeting that, that I've had is, I wish they would have used different language because what they mean by continuous learning is they mean remote learning where students are not on site. That's what they mean by continuous learning. So it says, all districts and accredited non-publics must have a plan to offer continuous learning or remote learning and require the participation of students as schools open for 2021. So it would not be voluntary. It would be required grades pre K through 12 for remote learning if we could not return brick and mortar and we are remote. Required continuous learning plans will be submitted as part of the return to learn plans due July 1st. So we are in the middle, in the midst of, of working on, on all of this. And I'll get to that here in just a little bit. A plan for hybrid learning. All districts and accredited non-publics may choose to offer educational services through a hybrid model of continuous learning and onsite learning for at least some portion of the 2021 school year. This means services are offered both remotely and at physical school locations. The hybrid model may allow for social distancing while partially reopening school buildings to provide educational services. So we're thinking through all of that. We have our, our groups that are together that are thinking through, what does education look like in this remote model? What does it look, what could it look like in a hybrid model? And then step number three, all districts and accredited non-publics may also choose to move onsite provision of educational services as part of their return to learn plan, as long as it seems safe by public health officials, as I mentioned, and the school has actively planned for appropriate health and safety measures, which, which is something that we're going through right now with, with our committees. So the, the recommendation for return to learn is there are six groups that meet and, and discuss this and develop a plan, a plan A, B, and C, or one, two, three is, is how we have looked at it. I appreciate my building principals because I put them on the leadership team. I, I wanted, as I mentioned to you, I wanted to try and lose as little communication as possible in the crossover of, of all of this. So if the building principals sit on the leadership team and they are part of the committees every time we meet. Last Tuesday, we started with leadership and we went through the questions. I would say the vague questions that the DE put out for the leadership. And we got, I, I thought that was a good conversation. And then in that afternoon, we went to health and safety. So we had the leadership team as part of health and safety. And then we added Sue Weiss and Jennifer Striegel, our school nurses. We added Mark Port, Director of Buildings and Grounds, and Ted Carlson from Transportation, and Cheryl Wilson from Food Service, as we talked through, okay, what are the health and safety things that we need to be thinking about in these three Yeah. So that was, that was Tuesday afternoon. And then Wednesday morning was infrastructure. We met as an infrastructure team. So that would have been the leadership team. Infrastructure is more, more about technology. So it was the leadership team, Chris Johnson, our tech director, a number of instructional coaches who have been helping teachers with, through this, the remote learning when we were doing the voluntary. We had a number of instructional coaches who were, are part of the infrastructure team to discuss, how did the technology work? What kind of professional development do we need for teachers to be able to be successful in remote learning or even, even a hybrid model? So tomorrow morning, we will be back here and the, the next, the next group to meet and, and talk through this is, is called Iowa Academic Standards. And so we, we divided up into secondary. So our middle school and high school will meet tomorrow afternoon. Katie's going to run that. And we've got instructional coaches and teachers on that team. Tomorrow morning, we have the elementary, the elementary Iowa Academic Standards group that will be, we've got a set of questions that we're going to, that we're going to run through and discuss. So that's, that's tomorrow morning and then afternoon. And then Wednesday morning, the, the fifth area is called Social, Emotional, Behavioral and Mental Health. So we'll have the core team. And then in addition to that team, we've got Sarah Blong, our counselor, Ashley Vang House, Katie Van Sickle, our, our social worker, Melissa Cull, social worker. What's that?
Breon Porter.
Oh, Breon Porter from the middle school. So some of those resources to talk about the, the behavior and mental health side of, of returning to learn. And then finally, Wednesday afternoon, we'll meet with the equity team, which again is the leadership corps plus English language, Jennifer Rebeling and, for our English language, Tammy Carroll or from English Language Learns. We have representatives for special education, Jennifer Striegel from Health Services, Karen Kaufman from TAG, what's that?
Kristy Emerson.
Kristy Emerson for that, that equity piece. So those are, we're having some, having conversations based on some of the questions that the, the state documents are giving us. And then we're going to try and pull all of that together and put it into a plan for remote learning, plan for hybrid learning, a plan for onsite learning. So. It's, it's, I'll just tell you, I mean, it's really challenging. It's very, very challenging when, when you just don't know and you're going to be charged with making a decision here locally. And, you know, when do we need to make that? On all of those, you're, you're probably thinking of a lot of questions and I'm sure that, that we have thought of them too. We need to, you know, I talked to one of the Henry County superintendents today. And so we thought it'd probably be helpful to get together with Shelley Van Dorn and, and our nurses and, and to talk about that health and safety piece, you know, if, and maybe what some of the metrics should be on deciding if we are, you know, back brick and, brick and mortar. So what am I missing? Any, anything?
I don't know what you would be missing. You can't ask that. I don't know what we would be missing.
Right.
We don't even know what the plan has to look like. The state hasn't given us the questions we have to prepare for and that. So.
Right.
Now wait till you see what you've written.
So it's, you know, it's, I was, it's, it's, it's a challenge.
Yeah. This, this is huge, but I do have a couple of questions. You talked about some students that their family may just not see them back at all.
Correct.
Partly because of the family situation. And I know of one family where the two adults are, you know, their health is fragile and they're in the country where they have spotty internet.
Yep.
Are, I know we're aware of people like that.
Yep.
Are going to venture toward homeschool or?
Our plan is, our plan is to, well, it's kind of, kind of two parts there. Would we, would we have, in, in that situation, whatever grade level it is, would we have accessible curriculum for them? And we have been thinking a lot about that and how we, how we can do that because we think we can. And then the second part of that would be the, the technology piece and how do we, how do we meet that need or help families meet that need? So yes, we've been considering all of that, all of it. And bottom line, Martha, if, if we have to, if something like that has to happen, do we, do we realize and recognize that, you know, we might have to videotape instruction and take resources to those families and, and pick up, pick up those, you know, the, the work that is being done? I mean, we're just, we're just going to have to, I mean, we know that that's a part of what we're going to have to do.
Okay. And then I have socio-emotional piece. I, I kept thinking about, I think our roundup is happening, the sixth graders using in the middle school isn't happening.
Right.
And ninth graders who keep at the high school and got the start for 24th, can we slide some of those experiences?
Yeah. All of those, all of those things we, we have been discussing. And I'll let the principals, because they, they tried to bite off a little bit of that even yet this plane. So Lori, do you want to start?
We have got a really innovative plan. We started kindergarten. I think this is another thing that's going to come out of COVID that we will carry on in future years. We're going to start with having parents come in and meet with teachers. What we're calling is a soft start kindergarten. So the teachers will meet with each and every parent and then they will do, so that will take two days. And then they will have kindergarten roundup for two days. Then we'll come back with sort of loosely, we're not going to really assign everybody to a teacher. And then we're going to do every other day for kids until after the, wait, maybe then.
Will, will these roundup kinds of experiences happen on the 24th before then?
We will start, we'll start on the 24th when we come back to school.
Okay. But, but also we've got preschool teachers who do home visits. And I don't think that's a required part of that program.
We're actually, because of the social distancing piece for preschool, we're going to do it similarly where we invite people in and we can, we know we can socially distance and disinfect things like that. So rather than going in and doing an, an actual home visit, it will be inviting them into the campus. And that's the same thing that the kindergarten teachers are actually doing by bringing the parents in rather, because we talked about, why do we do, why do we do a home visit like we do with preschool? This was that, that safe opportunity to bring people in and, and have that relationship building time.
And really, when we think about it, when we have parents in the spring and we do kindergarten roundup and tell them all the things we're going to do in kindergarten and then they don't come back till August.
Yeah, this is good.
Yeah. I really feel like, you know, they're going to get that just in time information. It'll be actionable immediately. I feel like the bad, I mean, even though it feels different because we're used to having that kindergarten roundup in the spring, I feel like this will be a, a good, aggressive change.
And I know a lot of parents want to lock in their favorite teacher at that point. Oh, we all do that. I know. Just saying. I do it too. They're all, we have excellent teachers.
Nathan, you want to talk a little bit about the transition?
Yeah, sure. This spring, we've done two concessions. We've probably had about 57 of the fifth graders jump on those and parents. But everything that we would typically done in the spring, you know, in the summer, we still want to do it. Because we, we just, and I agree with Lori, you know, kind of upfront. So what we plan on doing is, you know, we'll be similar to kind of back to school mode, doing something for the sixth graders where they come in, either sixth grade teachers have the building to themselves. You know, we'll have to give them the justice.
Do that before the 24th?
We'll do that before the 24th. We'll, we'll do that after the transition. And we'll see where COVID is at that time. If we've got a break in the case or whatever they need, just so that they can have the building to themselves. We'll also bring the student council in because they like, they like that as well as we're asking the questions to the students. Typically, we would, we would, we, the principal, middle school principals will go have lunch with them, they do a classroom visit, and then we're doing a mobile forum and tour and then just the questions to the student council. So we really want to do all the same things. Obviously, I can't do lunch with them for a classroom visits, but just that, when the seventh and eighth graders aren't there, talk to the sixth grade teachers. They're, they're willing to come in, you know, by the contract, you know, we've got a great staff. So they want that transition as possible.
That's important, yeah.
Yes. Seeing that and just that assurance that it's bigger building than, you know, having, I think having that, have the building to themselves is getting.
That is, yeah. Similar to high school?
We, we haven't said a day yet back to school yet, but I'm assuming before school starts. But we, our student council made a, like, you know, come to high school, we have posted that, we'll invite the kids in for it, come see us night. And then we'll have, on the first day of school, we have freshman focus, which is to show around, have lunch with Slidger and, you know, show around the building. There's also talks about circles.
Those freshman books still lost.
Yeah. Yeah. So we'll attempt to do that again and then hopefully when we have a back to school line, we'll also have.
That's good.
Do you have a little question?
One is true.
I have a, I have a little question on like the hybrid or the A and P standard or back to court. Will that at some point be set in hours? You know, give enough instructional hours in?
Yeah. That's a, that's a good. We've thought about that too. That's, that's a really great question. And the, this whole idea of hours and instructional hours and what is required from the state is 1,080. There's really not a clear answer from the department on how they're going to handle that. Just like, let's say you're in remote learning. Well, how much of a day do you have to be on remote learning to, to meet a day of instruction or 1,080 hours? So it's not, it's just not very clear. I think there's going to, I, I get a sense that there will be grace given for this, this situation. I also think Angie, it's as much as we can, if we were going to do something, if we ended up doing something like that, we need to have a defined amount of time that we can tell our families, we're, we're going to start like this and, and on this date, we're going to look at the data and make a decision. If, if the data looks good, then, then we're going to, you know, we're, we're going to expand, opening the doors and going, going face to face. So those are just some thoughts. And, and, you know, I, you guys as community members and parents and have, have good perspective to on, on, you know, what, what we need to do. So we'll, we're going to try and put these general plans together and, and run them past you and see what you, see what you think. So. Okay. The final thing then in the superintendent's report is just a legislative update. As you guys know, the, the legislature went back to business last week. The notes there that I have for you, that's, that's straight from one of the lobbyists, one of our lobbyist groups. So they're, you know, they're, they're headed into the second funnel. And I, I left in there a little bit of data for figures from the revenue estimating conference. And while the revenues are down from the estimates, they're, they're actually, they're still, the estimates are still up from the previous, from the previous year, from, from 2019. So, I mean, it's not great news, obviously, because they were hoping for, for greater receipts. But it's, it's not, it's not totally doom and gloom. Ed passed on just, just a, a, from, from Piper Sander that, that does so much of the bonding for school districts across the state that, that, you know, the save, the save revenue, as we've said, we're going to have to pay good attention to what that is, is looking like, but it's not, it's not all doom and gloom. So they're, they're, you know, they're keeping an eye on those revenues as, as we will also. So I think the rev, the next time the revenue estimating conference gets together is October, I believe. So, you know, they'll have new estimates then. you know, they'll have new estimates then and, and have even maybe a, a little better idea of, of what that long term is gonna look like based on, um, everything that's happening in our world today. There is a technology needs assessment that is going out. We, uh, so you will be seeing a, a technology needs assessment from the state. What they're trying to do with that is to get a feel for, um, in terms of infrastructure, uh, they're trying to get a feel for what needs to be done related to fiber, you know? Fiber in the ground across the state or in the air across the state. They're trying to get a, they're trying to get a feel for, uh, the needs of the fiber. So, uh, that will be coming out from, uh, from our office. We'll do it as a, a, a messenger blast and, and direct people to that, to that survey. So. Um, let's see. I think that was it legislatively. Uh, our, our lobbyists were doing a good job of keeping us updated. I, I, there was an issue that came up with, with save funding just over the weekend and, and so I shot an email off to Representative Mitchell and, and Senator Taylor this morning, um, with, you know, with, uh, concerns and encouragement on, on, um, save funding. So.
John, can you tell about the return to, to where we did it? Do we need to meet at, at, towards the end of June for that, any discussion before that's submitted or not?
Yeah, probably, uh. Can I get back to you on that?
That's fine. I just wanted to.
Yeah.
Throw that out there.
I wish we had a better idea. We, we have no idea what the actual questions, the plan itself is gonna look like. I mean, I think we'll be able to, to, after all of these conversations, we'll be able to, to put together a, a general planning for each of these. And I think it'll, it'll fit, um, what the, what the state is wanting. But let, let me get back to you on that. But I, I think the answer to your question is yes.
I think that is natural.
Yeah.
Um, more committee reports. You have a summary that was working reports. Is there anything, um, in particular that you wanna point out?
Well, the only thing I, we, we talked about a lot, we had a lot of great conversation in committee, uh, meetings. Um, and we'll go over some of it in, in the new, um, the new business. Uh, I just, I, I asked the policy committee, what do you want me to do about handbooks? Because we, we had a lot of in-depth conversation about handbooks on Friday. And, and rather than rehash that all again, I think that the policy committee was satisfied with the, the handbooks. We, we don't have the elementary handbook yet. The formatting was all out of whack, but we do have, um, so that's getting fixed. We do have the high school, the, um, the high school wisdom quest and middle school handbooks for your approval in new business. Um, and, and I told the policy committee that, you know, there, there may be some, like, you know, some addendums that we might need to make based on, on return to learn. But in general, those are done and, and they felt comfortable with them to, to recommend your approval for them in new business. So that was the only thing I had to mention. Remind me again, on the elementary handbook, was there any changes? Lori, there are some, there are.
Did I find it hard to look?
So you've already got it made?
We have, we made the changes, but all of the files are corrected. We can't find the file that's not corrected. So I don't know if we're gonna have to retype the whole thing or I've got taken it in person by the train. That's not what it is.
So do we approve the elementary one? Actually, I told him, I said, Chuck, I didn't wanna put it in front of the board until it was, the product was finished. Yeah, so everything, yeah, I'm sorry. Everything except elementary, and I'll have that for you next month.
And really, we had some very minor changes, like, um, Dawn was the, um, a piece reporter, you know, and so there were very, there were no such major changes. Just a few little, mostly great.
Um, is there any other work in the patients? Okay, moving on then, personnel and open enrollment. And question? I would ask a question, Dawn. I know we've had a lot of discussion already about coaches.
Yep.
And the need for coaches and difficulty finding coaches. Are we making any progress on that that way or not?
We are, yeah, slowly. Um, uh, I, I wish Scott was here. He's working on it all the time. But we are making progress on, on getting some of these. I think at one point we had, um, nineteen? Twenty? We had twenty, twenty positions to, to fill. Uh, and so we are, uh, we're working hard to, Scott's working hard to, to get that done. So. I mean, fortunately, they weren't all for the fall.
Yes, yes. My biggest concern is just, you know, providing that continuity of coaching for kids and making sure we can get that best experience.
Absolutely. I, I couldn't agree more. And, um, it's, uh, yeah, it's not, it's just, it's, it's hard to, hard to finally keep the coaches.
Yeah.
Uh, we'll make a motion to approve personal items handled in general.
Second.
Sandersville? Yes. Wiley?
Yes.
Andrews?
Yes.
Amos?
Yes.
Pearl?
Yes.
Lynn?
Yes.
Audrey?
Yes.
Okay, that's approved. So we have no unfinished business. So moving on to new business. And our first course of action is the second reading with recognition for more policy three hundred.
Okay. Yep. The only thing in policy three hundred, uh, the only recommended change was to the administrator code of ethics and, and there's no change from the conversation we had last month. Uh, the original, the, the current policy lists, uh, the, you know, the, the code of ethics and the, the revised policy or the recommendation is to, to go ahead and use uh, the Iowa Board of Educational Examiners Professional Code of Conduct. Um, and, uh, so that's, that's the way that was rewritten. For, uh, instead of our own list, we use the, the establishment of, of Code of Ethics.
Any other questions? I approve that we approve this change in policy three oh one four three. Sorry. Ed, roll call?
Sandersville?
Yes.
Wiley?
Yes.
Andrew?
Yes.
Amos?
Yes.
Pearl?
Yes.
Lynn?
Yes.
Audrey?
Yes.
Up next are student handbooks, which we have in front of us for the high school, um, the middle school and the wisdom quest.
Now, if, unless you have, uh, questions of your, um, your, the committee members, I would recommend you approve, uh, approve the handbooks.
I would ask anything from the committee members that you thought was necessary to point out or? Yes, Tom?
Did I capture our conversation?
Pretty well.
She was on her thing.
Good. Okay. If there are any questions, then I would entertain a motion to approve those three handbooks.
I approve.
Second. Ed, roll call?
Sandersville? Yes. Wiley?
Yes.
Andrew?
Yes.
Amos?
Yes.
Pearl?
Yes.
Lynn?
Yes.
Audrey?
Yes.
Okay, up next is consideration of Bates' asphalt quote for Salem Elementary.
Yeah, and we covered this in the, uh, the site committee meeting last week. We had, uh, we had one, um, quote. Uh, we, we entertained quotes, um, and we, we ended up receiving just the one quote from Bates, uh, to perform the work at Salem. Uh, the total arrow is right at about what we were anticipating, thirty-four thousand, six fifty-seven. Um, so I would recommend that you approve.
Any other discussion? Not that I would entertain a motion to approve the asphalt.
Sorry.
Ed, roll call please.
Andersonville? Yes. Wiley?
Yes.
Andrew?
Yes.
Amos?
Yes.
Pearl?
Yes.
Lynn?
Yes.
Audrey?
Yes.
That will be good. Next is, um, our code on our property, that we did once in front of insurance renewal.
So I'm gonna turn it over to Ed. We, again, we had this discussion at our finance committee meeting and, uh, you've got that in front of you. I've got it on the screen there, so I'll let Ed walk, uh, walk you through this.
Yeah, you have the summary that our local agent, Mike Benz, which is, uh, who's, uh, been with for quite a few years with Cameron and Philo Benz. Um, the renewal, it's again with EMC Insurance. Uh, they have a great majority of the schools, probably all but like twenty-five of the schools in state of Iowa. Uh, so they are very specialized in school insurance. Um, he has, of course, broken out by, um, insurance line there. Um, and he has, uh, well documented, um, what the increases are and, and why, uh, the increases. But, uh, just pointing out a, a few of the things, of course, the, uh, first column there is the last year's renewal. So you can see we paid, uh, two hundred and seventy thousand, seven hundred and sixty-nine dollars. Um, the middle column is, um, this year's renewal, so it's two hundred and eighty-five thousand. So it's, uh, an increase of fourteen thousand, eight hundred and ninety-two dollars. Uh, the second column there is, um, an increase, uh, it, it's using last year's rates, but, um, revising the, uh, quote based on, um, an increase in, uh, property values and as well as, uh, like auto values, because, uh, we sell and purchase vehicles every year. So it just kinda gives a comparison. So, um, so basically, uh, uh, there were some increases in the, uh, property, um, and, uh, also auto, um, program as well as, uh, small increase in liability. Uh, these are due, uh, since we are a statewide insurance school, uh, with those, uh, probably three hundred plus districts, um, you know, we do share, uh, generally good times as well as the bad times. So, uh, we, there were some pretty large claims. Uh, I think there was a, uh, large bus accident, uh, as well as, uh, several, um, property, um, losses that occurred a lot because had a few storms, um, that hit the state. Um, the one good, uh, part there, uh, in the, uh, insurance program is workers' comp insurance. You can see that that went down almost ten thousand dollars. Uh, again, that is based on two things. One is, uh, of course, our experience, our modification factor, the color. Uh, that went down for, uh, second, third straight year, uh, as well as, um, the raise, the, uh, state of Iowa, um, steps for, uh, workers' comp insurance. So, again, uh, we have a return to work program and I just, that's what O C S has, five H R, she does a great job then. And, uh, people get basically the, the help that they need, um, right away. So they see experts right away. So. So again, um, you know, in the early, uh, spring, we were given a statewide email that was sent out, uh, by EMC and said we could probably range for ten to fifteen percent, uh, increase of premiums given as a statewide basis. And then, uh, it did come back and about five point five percent increase for us. So, so again, uh, you know, parts of it to be, uh, increased in workers' comp. Instead of, uh, having an increase in, you know, our O D O, you know, which is set for almost fifteen thousand dollar increase in two hundred and eighty-five thousand, six hundred and sixty-one dollars.
And I would like to commend the work that you've been doing on that workers' comp, because you have definitely seen that rise in comp. They don't do gratitude here. I think that needs to be noted, that it's really efficient.
Big change, yep.
Any questions? If not, then I would entertain a motion to approve our property coverage and workers' comp insurance renewal.
So moved.
Second. Ed, roll call please.
Sandersville? Yes. Wiley?
Yes.
Andrew?
Yes.
Amos?
Yes.
Pearl?
Yes.
Lynn?
Yes.
Audrey?
Yes.
Up next, we have our consideration, um, for insurance on the laptops, um, that we have from S U Insurance.
Yep, so, uh, uh, S U I Specialty Underwriters Insurance is a, um, they're kind of a, a, uh, division, but they're, they're part of EMC. Um, we are, currently our, uh, our fleet of student laptops, our teacher laptops, uh, that were new last year as part of the, of the new, as, as part of the new lease program from Apple. Uh, our iPads, uh, that are part of that new lease, uh, are covered, uh, for damage and accidents and breakage. They're, they're all covered. We, we have been, um, our, our premium to, to loss ratio, our losses for the last couple of years have been much higher than our premiums. And, um, uh, so we did see a change in that this year. Our, our adjustment, our, the, the fifteen thousand dollars that went up in the, in the, uh, property insurance, we, we, um, uh, it went down, uh, in the, uh, in the insurance coverage. So all of our, all of our devices that leave the district are covered, um, which is important if we go back to remote learning. Um, and, and specialty underwriters really does. Uh, the, the, the coverage is, is pretty comprehensive. We just haven't had any trouble with that. So, um, these are, and, uh, these, both of these expenses are management fund expenses. So they're not general fund, they are management fund expenses. Um, and, uh, so that was a good adjustment and, and I would recommend that you approve.
Uh, a quick question. Do you, I, I know that Chris recommended the, this program. Part of what he would be was that the machines are gonna be alike from one to the next. Like we didn't have two different kinds of hard drives. It would all get Apple consistent and Apple's little price here upfront, but you have that guarantee. And I assume that was helpful? Was it also that the kids were taken better care? Or had better understanding of how to take care of their machines?
They're new.
I understand that.
I would say a lot is because they're new.
Okay. I was just curious how it was, it looks like.
I think new machines have less problems and so they receive less first payment.
Nathan, what's your, I mean, your, the others?
I was just gonna say, uh, you know, we could do, uh, public checkups with students. So they go through, you know, for, uh, they get out of the school, they do that with the advisory. I think that's, you know, just making sure and something's laying eyes on, uh, I think it's what's on.
Good job.
We'll take that.
Any other questions? If not, then I would entertain a motion to approve our laptop tablet insurance renewal. So moved.
Second.
Ed, roll call please.
Andersonville?
Yes.
Wiley?
Yes.
Andrew?
Yes.
Amos?
Yes.
Pearl?
Yes.
Lynn?
Yes.
Audrey?
Yes.
Okay. Look at that. So then up next is consideration of our shared personnel agreement with the A E A.
Okay. So, uh, so you have that, uh, as part of your packet. We, we did, um, we, we went through this, uh, I think in the finance committee, didn't we? Yeah, we went through this in the finance committee. We, this past year is the first year that we have done an organizational sharing agreement with, uh, the area education agency. We purchased four days a week, uh, of social worker time, uh, from the A E A. So the, the reason that that's a benefit to the district is, of course, we get the time of the social worker, which is, has been much needed. Um, and then you also, as part of organizational sharing, uh, you, you get additional waiting for the, um, positions that you share. So, uh, a, a social worker agreement, which is new, this, it was new this last year, uh, is you, you get an additional waiting. was new this last year, is you, you get an additional waiting of three students, so, at, at about seven thousand dollars a student, we get additional funding of about twenty-one thousand dollars, so the cost of, of the, of the agreement here, fifty-four thousand dollars, is somewhat offset by the additional funding that we receive for the agreement, and, so we purchase those four days a week, I, I think that the program, again, like so many, it's like Tony was saying, it really started to pick up some steam, and, and really started to, we really started seeing it make a difference in kids' lives, I know I shared with, with the finance committee Sarah LeBlanc's comments, that she really appreciated the time and working with Katie Mansickle on this, so, I, I wanna recommend to you that we, we go do it another year and, and see what benefit we can, again, get for our kids from this agreement, so I, I would recommend that you approve.
Any questions? If not, then I would entertain a motion to approve our agreement for the VDA, so.
Move.
Well, Ed, roll call.
Andersonville?
Yes.
Wiley?
Yes.
Andrew?
Yes.
Amos?
Yes.
Pearl?
Yes.
Flynn?
Yes.
Bunker?
Yes.
Our next piece of business is to approve the continuation of our IJAG program, thank you for coming today.
Yep, and I, I just, I put the entire MOU, the memorandum of understanding, in your packet, so, as I mentioned, the, the funding for IJAG is, comes from three different spots, the district at about twenty thousand dollars, the, the State of Iowa, and then businesses across the state fund IJAG also, so, our costs, if nothing changes, our cost next year would be twenty thousand dollars for the IJAG program and Tony's services with those kids, I told the finance committee, I am working with a local business to try and get a ten thousand dollar donation to that program, I can tell you that locally, the business here locally would, would love to just do this, but corporately, at the corporate level, what we're, the challenge is, they, their giving needs to be to, we need to be a fifty percent free and reduced for their, their giving, and our high school, like, like so many high schools, our kids, we don't get as many kids identifying as free and reduced at the high school level as we do at the, at the under grade level, so, we're, I'm still working with that business to, to try and make that happen, but I just want you to know it hasn't happened yet, so if we, if we had to absorb the entire cost, it would be twenty thousand dollars on the district department, I, I would recommend that you approve, I'd like to see this continue to go forward and, and continue to, to be a great resource for our kids.
Any questions? Todd, is there anything you want to add?
Please.
I guess I never said that, but thank you.
So we don't think we'll have enough, we're still like, we've got.
Do you want to respond to that?
Will we have any issues filling the fifty grasp response?
I think we'll fill it, essentially for forty-five, but I think that if we get in the soft wars, we'll be all right. Last year's software class had several students who were disenfranchised, and I hope to get in this year, to give some positive traction, but they were the group when Mr. Anderson and Tom died back, and we really were the type of party.
Other questions? If not, then I would entertain a motion to approve our LOU with the IJAG program for continuation.
So who?
Second. Ed, roll call please.
Andersonville?
Yes.
Wiley?
Yes.
Andrew?
Yes.
Amos?
Yes.
Pearl?
Yes.
Flynn?
Yes.
Bunker?
Yes.
Okay, so now we, I will entertain a motion for us to move into closed session for superintendent job performance evaluation for Iowa Code twenty-one point five, one I. Second. Ed, roll call.